The Planning Commission today, Monday, October 20th. It is 9:02 a.m. We are going to start with public comment. Any issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the dais, and begin by stating their name, address, or single member district. We are going to limit our remarks to less than three minutes. So, public comment is officially open if anyone has anything they'd like to say.
We do not have anybody signed up.
Wonderful. Thanks, Ray. So, on that note, we will close public comment, and we will be moving to the consent agenda. The commission may request for consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for presentation of public comment. Otherwise, the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by staff with no opposition received to date. Some of the items on the consent agenda might require a public hearing. The commission will accept the public comment on any item on the consent agenda in one public hearing. And then, do I make a motion to approve the consent agenda? I can't remember.
Whoever needs to...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. So, we've got a motion from Lyndon, or Lyndon, and second from Candy. If we can all say we agree, let's move forward.
Aye.
Okay. That's five zero on consent agenda, and we will move forward on meeting minutes. We're considering to approve the meeting minutes from September 15th, 2025. Does anyone on the planning commission have any objection to the minutes that were provided?
I'll make a motion to approve the September 15th, 2025 minutes.
Second.
All right. I've got a motion by Candy, a second by Lyndon, so meeting minutes are approved. Moving along to the regular agenda, we are going through subdivision plots first. The Planning Commission has the final authority for approval. Appeals may be made directly to City Council. Item one is FP 25-23, Shriner's Point, Section 3. A request for final plat of the Shriner's Point, Section 3, located at Blum Street and Limley Lane, and Limley Lane and Fleming Street. Thank you, Ray.
Good morning. Ray Lineberry, Lead Planner. So, this morning, this is Section 3 of Shriner's Point. It is just continuing on the Shriner's Point area. So, it is 5.033 acres. It is under APD. The district is Joe Self, and it is Lakeview Neighborhood. They are creating residential lots, single-family, and this is what it looks like. Limley Lane will be new. They will continue with Blum Street, and I believe, let me go back, Fleming is new. The zoning is incorrect. It is no longer RS1. It is under APD, and the vision plan is neighborhood. So, with that, staff is recommending approval that they submit plans for the local roads, they do the water main and required connections, the sewer main and connections, a drainage study, and that they do submit a revised plan showing a temporary turnaround or a turnaround. And then, the note that they make the fire hydrant and fire department access statement. With that, is there any questions?
Any questions for Ray? Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Ray.
Then Russell Gully has signed up for public comment.
So, we will open it up for public comment.
Erica Wilde, Wilde Engineering and Surveying. Can we go back to the plat?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I don't know how to do that. So, the temporary turnaround, did those not? I'm confused by that. I'm sorry. I'm just... You know what? We'll work that out with staff. We just asked that, I said, "We'll work that out with staff." We just asked that you approve as presented.
You're easy.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any other public comment? Okay. So, we'll close public comment and open it up for discussion or a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve as the city has presented.
Okay. So, motion by Lyndon, second by Liz, and with that, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
So, that's five zero. All right. So, we will move on to item number two, RP 25-23, Parkview Acres. A request for the fifth replat, Parkview Acres, Block 22, Section 6, two acres located at Ben Ficklin Road and Kimrye Lane, with a variance request to widen the street by a portion of the full required incremental half of the width without curb and gutter.
Good morning. Ray Lineberry again, Lead Planner. This one is taking a lot off of Ben Ficklin and Kimrye, that big single lot, and making it two. It is two acres. They are splitting it into one acre each. It is in District 1, Tommy Hebert, Glenmore Neighborhood. It is zoned R&amp;E, ranch and estate, and the vision plan is neighborhood. This is the plat. The plat with the current house on it. The zoning and the vision plan. And then, I took pictures because they have a variance request on curb and gutter, and the paving width technically is 31 instead of 36, the standard. I believe Ben Ficklin, it does not have a curb. It looks, unless it's a lay-down curb. I'm learning a lot about curbs. But they have requested a variance on the curb and gutter, and their incremental half to widen the road. They have asked the same thing on Kimrye. Oh, I might have had the pictures missed up. I wonder if this is Ben Ficklin? Oh, this is Kimrye? Okay. Okay. So, Kimrye is not paved as much. It is 21 instead of 26, and they are requesting to not have to curb. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of the plat and both the variances with the conditions that, well, the conditions are still that they pave both Ben Ficklin and Kimrye up to the standard and install curb and gutter. They have requested a variance for both of those, and then to install water and wastewater service lines to the new lot.
Okay. Thank you, Ray. Go ahead and open public comment.
Good morning. Russell with SKG Engineering. Ms. Kimrye is looking to divide her property with the passing of her husband and her getting up in age. She's looking to have her daughter and her husband move back, so she's just looking to divide the family homestead into two lots so that her daughter and son can move next. And they're going to front Ben Ficklin with their new home and the way the plots layout. So, with that, we would ask for your approval of the variances, which would satisfy conditions 1, 2, 4, and 5, and then she will, or her builder, someone will go ahead and get the water and sewer service taps paid for to satisfy condition 3. So, would be happy to answer any questions and ask for your approval as presented with the variances approved as well.
Okay. Thank you, Russell.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any other public? Okay. Perfect. We'll go ahead and close public comment and open for discussion or motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. We've got a motion by Liz, second by Lyndon. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five zero, and we will move forward to RP 25-25, Caldwell Rose Court Edition. Request to replat one lot into four lots over .61 acres within the single-family residential zoning district at the intersection of Grape Creek Road and West 36th Street.
Good morning, Planning Commission. Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning Development Services. We have this replat here in Caldwell's Rose Court Edition. We are going to replat the .61 acres. It is RS1, single-family residential. The address right now is on 36th Street. It being 216 West 36th Street. That will change, and the addresses will come off of Grape Creek. This is SMD Number 2, Mr. Joe Self, and Riverside Neighborhood. You can see the image there, right along Grape Creek and 36th. This is just a good infill redevelopment project. So, I have it laid out here just a little bit different so that you can kind of see the lots. This is 36 on that side, and of course, Grape Creek to the top. But they're creating these four lots here, coming across here. One thing I did want to mention is that they're showing a 15-foot building line. Our RS1 is 25-foot, and so they are, they do have a case that will be pending in front of the Planning Commission to resolve that, as well as this double front, or double, excuse me, yes, double frontage over here, and allowing a 10-foot building setback while they still have the right-of-way. So, I just wanted to point those things out on the plat. Doesn't affect the plat at this case for those four lots to move forward. It is neighborhood for the vision plan. It is RS1 for the zoning. This is just the, looking to the north on your right, and looking to the west on your left. You can see the property there is a nice big property, nice curb and gutter. Streets are all to the right standard. Very simple case of creating four lots, creating some new housing in that area. So, staff does recommend approval of RP 25-25. It's just simple, removing the setback distances off the plat and then installing necessary utility service connections to those lots. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Aaron. Anyone have questions for Aaron? All right. We will open it up for public comment.
This one is Erica Wilde.
Okay.
Erica Wilde, Wilde Engineering and Surveying, and Aaron pretty much summed it all up, so I just asked for approval as presented. If y'all have any questions, I'm available.
Anyone questions? Nope. All right. You're free. If we have any other public comment? Okay. We will go ahead and close public comment and open it up for discussion or a vote.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Okay. Motion by Patrick, second by Lyndon. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Candy, that was an aye? Yeah. Okay. Perfect. That's five zero. Thank you so much. Okay. RP 25-26, Lakeview Edition, Block 21. A request to replat two lots into four lots over .457 acres within the single-family residential zoning district at the intersection of Travis Street and East 47th Street, as well as a variance request for paving width and curb and gutter on Travis Street.
Thank you again, Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning Development Services. This is a fourth replat in Block 21 of the Lakeview Edition. You can see there at Travis and 47th. Our subject property is here just to the southeast where there's two long lots facing 47th, and they're going to create four lots that are facing Travis as an infill project. The current addresses are 335 and 351 East 47th. It is zoned RS1. This is in SMD Number 2, Mr. Joe Self, and in the Lakeview Neighborhood. So, again, I turned this plat just so you could see the orientation of the lots. Again, this is 47th on the right. This is Travis here to the top, and then they have four uniform lots that are going across here. It does create a double frontage on this side, but we do have a case that will be going forward to the ZBA for that, as well as the 15-foot setback. And in this case, makes a lot of sense. There is, and you don't see it on this sheet, but there's another sheet that shows that there's actually a 10-foot right-of-way, and so really, that is going to match the same kind of setback at the front for that side. But that'll be heard at the ZBA. Does not impact the actual plat of the land at this time. See, that is neighborhood. You can see the campus institutional. That's one of the SAISD properties, and so very close to the school. I think that's Lincoln Middle School, I believe, up there on Lakeview Heroes Drive. So, adding housing in and close to schools is always a good thing. Again, the zoning currently is RS1. Here, you can see on the left, you're looking back to the east along 47th, and you can see it is a nice wide street, got curb and gutter there, and then Travis here on the right side. The paving width is actually to standard, so it's over the 26 feet. It just simply doesn't have curb and gutter on the eastern side. At this time, that's not a major issue for this project because it's only one block length through there. They only are plating to the alleyway, and I'll go back to that plat just so you see that there's an alleyway there. And so, it's really only half the block, and for them to do that along there does not make a lot of sense at this time. So, we are in support of that variance for the curb and gutter along Travis. So, staff is recommending approval of the replat, as well as the approval of the variance request. Again, just some simple things about removing the setbacks, install the utility service connections, again, that talks about curb and gutter, or receive the variance. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Aaron. Anyone have any questions for Aaron? No? All right. We will open public comment.
Erica.
Just get you a chair right up here.
Hi again. Different plat, same thing. I just asked that y'all approve as presented, and if you have any questions, I'm certainly here to answer.
Okay. Anyone have questions? Okay. Thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment? Okay. We will close public comment and open for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay. Motion from Lyndon, second from Liz. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five zero. RP 25-27, Lakeview Edition, Block 28. A request to replat Block 28, lots 13 and 14 of the Lakeview Edition, combining two lots that are currently oriented east to west and creating four lots oriented north to south within the single-family residential zoning district, as well as a variance request for no curb and gutter along Oaklawn Street.
Good morning. Ray Lineberry, Lead Planner. This is Lakeview Edition, Block 28. It is .46 acres. It is zoned RS1, single-family. It is at the corner of 45th and Oaklawn, and it is Joe Self's district, the Lakeview Neighborhood. They are taking the two lots that you see here and making them into four that face This is the zoning. They are RS1 and neighborhood vision plan. This is the plat showing the four lots that they're cutting it down to. They did receive a variance for the double frontage on 14B from the ZBA. So, with that, staff is recommending approval. Oh, they did have a variance. The variance was to not install curb and gutter. And I thought I had pictures.
On Oaklawn.
On Oaklawn. Let's see. Zoom in right there. So, the variance was to not install curb and gutter right here, and staff is supportive of that. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of the plat and the variance with the conditions that they need to install water and wastewater service lines for each new lot, install the curb and gutter if the variance is not approved, and then the plat does say Oaklawn Boulevard instead of Oaklawn Street, so they will have to revise that plat.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Ray. Anyone have questions for Ray? No? All right. We'll open it up for public comment.
Russell with SKG would ask for your approval of the plat and variances as requested, and happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Anyone have questions for Russell?
Thank you very much.
All right. We'll close public comment and open for discussion or a motion. All in favor? Oh, sorry. Motion by Liz, second by Lyndon. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five zero. You're cruising today, guys.
Jesus.
RP 25-30, Lasker Edition, Block 20. A request to replat Block 20, lots 12 and 13 of the Lasker Edition, incorporating a small portion of the adjacent property to have the lots be abutting a local street within the two-family residential zoning district located at 56 and 60th, East 17th Street.
Good morning. Ray Lineberry, Lead Planner again. It's the final plat for today. It's the Laskers Edition, Block 20, and it is .31 acres, RS2, two-family residential. The address is 56 and 60, East 17th Street. It is in SMD 3, Harry Thomas, the Reagan Neighborhood. If you notice, I'm going to use this picture. For whatever reason, a long time ago, these were this little area right here, and right here were platted as separate lots, so they are now plating it as one, incorporating that little bit. The zoning, it is RS2, and it is neighborhood for the vision plan. This is the plat, and if you notice, staff, one of the conditions, staff is asking this to be removed. It is not actually part of the plat, I guess. It is like, next to the plat, but, oops, I might go back to this one. It's kind of right there, that little itty-bitty thing. Until we look at that plat, that final plat, we're not ready to accept that dedication. So, with that, staff is recommending approval with the conditions that they install water and wastewater service lines, that they submit a revised plat removing that dedication, and then sidewalks will be required, and they can request a waiver.
Okay. Perfect. Any questions for Ray? All right. Thank you, Ray. Open up for public comment.
Just Erica Wilde with Wilde Engineering and Surveying. I just asked for approval again as presented, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Okay. Perfect. Any questions for Erica? Any more public? Okay. So, we'll close public comment and open it up for discussion or a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay. A motion by Lyndon, second by Patrick. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five zero. Okay. We are on to right-of-way and alleyway abandonment. City Council has the final authority for approval of abandonment. Our first case, we're actually going to read this slightly differently, but it's ROW 25-07, East 41st Street and Bonham Street. A request to abandon a portion of the street on East 41st between Crockett and Bonham, and Bonham between 41st and the North Alley. We are also going to read in the rezoning aspect of this, which is item D, rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments. Jeez. City Council has the final authority for approval of rezonings and amendments to be, or to the comprehensive plan. We are going to look at item 3, which is Z 25-21, 617, East 42nd Street. A request for approval of the zoning change from RS1, single-family residential, to CN, commercial neighborhood for the property located at 617 East 42nd.
Thank you. Ray Lineberry, Lead Planner. I do believe this will take two votes, though, right? Yeah. So, you will have to vote on both, but they are in the same location, so I was presenting them together. So, as you can see, this is the old Lincoln School. It is Fort Concho East Neighborhood, District 4, Patrick Keely. The zoning is RS1 at the moment. They are, the vision plan is neighborhood. They are requesting to abandon the area in red right here. It was originally platted as a street and alleyway. They already kind of used it. You can see from the overhead image. And then, they are asking to rezone the area to Neighborhood Center to allow their, I think it's Tiny Texans, it's a daycare, to allow a daycare, but they want the option to go back to a school, so we didn't want to make it a full-blown commercial. But Neighborhood Center would allow the daycare. So, for the right-of-way, we sent out 28 notifications. We only received one in favor, and it was via phone. They didn't really say their address. And then, for the zoning, we sent out 48. We have not received any in favor and none in opposition. The zoning is RS1 currently, and it is neighborhood all around it. Oops, sorry. So, with the abandonment, the area measures about 60 by 550 feet on Bonham and 41st, and then the 41st that's between Crockett and Bonham. No portion of the abandonment has been improved. Like I said, you can tell they're already kind of using it. There is one city water and sewer within the area that may require an easement when they do replat to incorporate the abandonment, but we don't believe the abandonment will negatively affect any traffic patterns or surrounding owners. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of the right-of-way with the idea that they obtain approval and replat, and they provide a quick claim deed. And then, I'm also going to jump to the zoning, that it allows development for currently vacant building. Lincoln, the old Lincoln School is currently vacant. They want to repurpose it, and staff feels that that is a good idea. The idea that it follows a development pattern, it's right in the middle of residential, near the other schools, it will help a need in the area, and we don't, it's certainly compatible with the area. So, with that, staff is recommending approval for the rezon.
Okay. That was a lot.
It was a lot.
Does anyone have any questions for Ray on either the right-of-way and alley abandonment or the rezoning? No? Okay. Thank you, Ray. Do we have any public comment?
Russell.
Morning. Russell with SKG. This is part of the school district that submitted an application to do an interior remodel on an existing building, and it's kind of triggered this zone change since it's not maybe technically a school function. It's kind of questionable because it's the Tiny Texans still, so in the way they wanted to fence it, then it kind of looked like, hey, there's some right-of-way over here we're fencing in, and so kind of brought both of these together. So, we'll be coming in with a replat of that area. Hopefully, it'll be administrative, so maybe you won't get to see it, but either way, these are some first steps, so we would ask for your approval on both the right-of-way abandonment and the zone change, and happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful. Any questions? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Russell. Okay. With that being said, I will open it up for Planning Commission to make a motion, or if we have any discussion. We do need two motions, one on the right-of-way and alley abandonment, and one on the rezoning.
Motion to approve right-of-way 25-Tex 07.
Second.
Okay. Motion from Patrick, second from Lyndon on the right-of-way abandonment, and all in favor? Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No? No? Go ahead.
All right. I was going to say the motion to approve the zoning, 25-Tex 21 as well.
Second.
All right. Motion from Patrick, second from Lyndon. All in favor of the right-of-way abandonment and, or sorry, ROW 25-07. Make a motion.
Aye.
Okay. All right. That's five zero, and all in favor of Z 25-21.
Aye.
All right. Five zero. Thank you, Planning Commission. Okay. We will go back to our right-of-way and alley abandonment. So, our next case is ROW 25-08, 500 West 12th Street. A request for abandonment of an unimproved portion of West 12th Street, along with a nearby unimproved alleyway northwest of the intersection of West 11th Street and North Bryant.
Thank you. Austin Reed, Senior Planner. This one comes out of the Blackshear Neighborhood. It is District Number 4, Patrick Keely's district. The zoning here is light manufacturing, and the vision plan is commercial. What we have is a request for approval of the abandonment of two portions of right-of-way. As you can see, this is kind of in the middle of some vacant properties. Here's a better look at that abandonment. Here's a better look at that abandonment. On the left-hand side, we have what is technically a 20-foot alleyway. On the right, we have what would be West 12th Street. We sent out 18 notices on this as we were required to. We do not receive any responses that I am aware of. Onto our analysis, so the alleyway measures 20 feet by 150. The street portion measures 60 by 250. None of this has ever been used for access or improved in any way. I should also note that the remaining segments of right-of-way on this block near this have already been abandoned in the past. There's no utilities here, and we don't think that it would negatively affect traffic patterns, the environment, or surrounding property owners. So with that, we are recommending approval, subject to three conditions. First one being for the remittance of payment, second one for the replat that they'll have to come out for, and the third one should be for that quick claim deed. Do you guys have any questions?
No? All right.
Thank you.
All right, we'll open up for public comment.
Russell Gully with SKG. The property owner, this was, I guess, multiple property owners in the area. It was all now combined to be one owner, and so this is kind of a first step, that they would need to abandon this right-of-way here, and then we'll be coming in with a replat. Looks like they're going to be wanting to replat it into three lots, so this area will hopefully be developed, actually set vacant. I say vacant, vacant for years, and so this is kind of that first step, and would ask for your approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Russell. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and open up for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve as presented.
Okay, we've got a motion by Lyndon, second by Candy. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, five-zero. Our final right-of-way case for the day is ROW 25-09, West 10th and Merchant Street. A request to abandon two segments of unimproved street right-of-way south of the intersection of West 11th and North Bryant.
Thank you, Austin Reed, Senior Planner again. We have another right-of-way abandonment. This one is actually just across the street from the last one to the south there, if you could notice from the map. So it's the same neighborhood, Blackshear neighborhood, District Number 4, Patrick Keely's district. Zoning is light manufacturing again. The vision plan for this one is industrial, and as you mentioned, we have a request for approval of the abandonment of two portions of the street right-of-way. So here's a better exhibit for that abandonment. That smaller stubbed-out portion is what would be 10th Street, going across North Bryant, and that bigger portion is what would be Merchant Street, which I don't think has ever been built in any way. We sent eight notices on this. Once again, we did not receive any responses. Onto our analysis, so none of this, as I mentioned, has ever been improved or used for access, from what we can tell. Most of this is actually city property right now. There's no existing city utilities within the abandonment either, so overall, we don't think that it would negatively affect traffic patterns, the environment, or surrounding owners. So that brings us to a recommendation. Again, we are recommending approval with our pretty standard three conditions for abandonments. First one being for that payment, second one for the replat, and then the third one being for the quick claim deed. Do you guys have any questions?
No. Thank you, Austin.
Thanks.
Okay. Open up for public comment? No? Okay. We will close public comment, and then, do I need to wait for Liz? Yeah, okay. We'll just take a quick moment. You're good. No worries, Liz. Take your time. We can take a recess after speaking, too. Okay. Okay, so Liz is back, so I.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay. Motion by Lyndon, second by Patrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five-zero. Okay, I say that. Okay, so we will move forward to conditional uses. The Planning Commission has final authority for approval. Excuse me, I'm so sorry, we're, there's a lot of feedback up in the front, and it's going to be hard for us to hear, so if we can just keep it down a little, thank you. The Planning Commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to City Council. Our only conditional use case today is going to be CU25-17, and it's 121 East Avenue K. A request for approval of conditional use to allow for residential dwelling unit for household living in the general commercial/heavy commercial zoning district located at 121 East Avenue K.
Good morning, Ray Limeberry, Lead Planner. This is a request to allow residential in a commercial zone. It is zoned general heavy commercial. It is District 3, Harry Thomas, with the Fort Concho East Neighborhood. They have received a conditional use for the residential in the past. They did not have all the conditions, they did not meet all the conditions of the previous one, which made it expire. So with that, they are coming back to continue their conditional use. We did mail out some notifications. We received two in opposition, zero in favor. Currently, the zoning is general and heavy commercial in the area. If you remember, it hasn't been updated on the map yet, but the lot right across from them was just rezoned to RM1, to, I believe it was multifamily, to allow some multifamily built there. And then, on the other side is the vision map. It is industrial, for some reason. It was originally neighborhood when they did their first conditional use, and most of it has become neighborhood. There is, of course, the water treatment plant right over here, and then along Oaks, there is some commercial use. So with that, staff is recommending approval for them to get the conditional use to allow residential use within the general commercial district, general commercial heavy commercial district. They shall conform to the CGCH district. We need to verify that they do still have their paved parking. They have built a fence up, so we were not able to verify that that was still in compliance. And then, they do need to obtain a change of occupancy. This was the condition that they did not meet last time, so this time, we are giving them six months to complete that instead of 12. So with that, is there any questions? We do have comments.
Name or single-member district, or address, sorry.
My name is Ramiro Garza. I'm not aware of the district.
Okay, just your address is perfect.
I won't worry about it.
Okay, thank you.
The reason I'm here is because I don't, you know, when I applied and I got the zoning and it was approved, it was basically done with Jeff Fisher, you know? Took me a long time to get it, and when it was approved, he just called me and let me know. We'd gotten to be almost friends at that point. So anyway, he just called me, said, "Ramiro, everything's good. You'll get acknowledgement in the mail, you'll get a letter," you know, "all the stipulations, and you've conformed to everything that they requested." So I kind of just lifted it that. I don't know, when I got the letter, I wasn't aware that I needed to reapply. This went on, I've been there, what, five years? I applied for a permit to build a carport about two years ago. I didn't, nothing came up, you know? I wasn't notified of anything. For some reason, they told me it had to be commercial, the permit, because I applied for a residential one, for the carport. So I just dropped it, you know?
Sure.
What, like, a month ago, I reapplied for it, and they told me it had to be residential at that point. So which one was it? So again, I just blew it off. And then I got this in the mail that I needed to, you know, reapply. So I'm like, what's it going to be? I've invested some time and money in the place since then, and my neighbor happens to be Mr. Zane, I can't forget his name.
Willard.
You're right. I spoke with him, I don't know who opposed me, but anyway, it doesn't matter. He, he's doing the, he's building this apartment, those duplexes, just east of me, and he informed me that he bought the property in front of me as well. He's probably going to do the same thing.
Yes, sir.
I don't see this area ever being heavy commercial ever again, or there's a little commercial, like she said, on Oaks. If anything, I was just trying to improve the area.
Yes, sir.
That whole side of town has been neglected, in my opinion. I saw it as a good thing.
Yes, sir.
Going in there, so. I don't know the, why the opposition, I just don't, I don't have a clue, but that's what I'm facing, and that's why I'm here.
Yes, sir. Well, we appreciate you being here, and sorry again for the confusion between, you know, the times that you've applied for that permit. Does, what the staff is recommending, does this make sense now on what we need to do? It seems like the biggest, the only one that we have left really is to obtain the change of occupancy from, Ray, can you help me?
Yeah. So we'll work with you. It'll be doing a change of occupancy through the building permit staff.
Okay, so somebody from permits will be reaching out, or does he need to be in touch?
We can have somebody reach out to you.
Sounds good. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ray. Do we have any other public comment?
No.
Okay. On that note, we will close public comment and open for discussion or a motion. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Know, like, why they opposed? Why the two opposed?
They didn't write anything on there, they just checked the box.
Okay. Okay, I was just curious.
And then, I know this isn't part of planning, but as far as, we don't know why, when he did his carport, one, the first application was commercial and the second was residential?
My guess is because they looked at the zoning and saw it was commercial.
So, but we've gotten this straightened out, that we don't have any issues. Okay. I just want to make sure he's not coming back three times, so. Okay, perfect. All right. With that, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay. Motion by Lyndon, second by Candy. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five-zero. Moving on to our last topic of the day, rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments. City Council has a final authority for approval of rezonings and amendments to the comprehensive plan. Our first case is PD 05-02, Coliseum and Fairgrounds Expansion. A request for expansion of a planned development, adding an additional 39 acres surrounding the east side of the Coliseum, located between Lakeview Heroes Drive and 43rd Street.
Thank you, Erin Lloyd, Director. Whoops, excuse me. Erin Lloyd, Director of Planning and Development Services. So we sat down with the team that's working on this project to redo the Coliseum and identified some areas that make sense to expand due to the construction and needing some areas for laydown that currently are zoned RS1, which don't make a lot of sense for that area. They've always been used for Coliseum and Fairground activities, and so we're just going to do an expansion. And so you can see here, basically, this is the original kind of PD that comes around this big rectangle, but this property here that has a detention pond and some space there, the, what used to be called the Red Barn, but now ASU utilizes it as their rodeo arena and area for their livestock. This is actually the rodeo association's land, and then this piece, again, is the city's land. And so these pieces here, we're going to expand the allowable uses for the Coliseum and the fairgrounds, which includes all those types of activities that they would do on the larger piece. Excuse me. This is SMD Number 2, Mr. Joe Self, and it is in the Lakeview neighborhood. So you can see here, the vision plan on the left shows that this is campus institutional, and so making this migration over there to the east with these properties makes a lot of sense. You can see over here that, again, this is that Lincoln Middle School. This is all zoned RS1 up here, but it's not functioning that way, and it hasn't in decades, and so it makes sense to go ahead and allow the allowable uses that are associated with here on the planned development. Same here with this property. While its main function is a detention pond, there are areas that are being, like, the city has a large mulch pile here, and they're going to need some of this area that's adjacent to the Coliseum as a steel laydown yard, possibly some workspaces for them to do welding, things like that, to get the Coliseum up and moving, as well as other projects that may come along on this property here. You can see, obviously, up here is Lincoln Middle School, so that's adjacent to it. There are here on Alamo, starting to be some residential properties, but they do back up to the Red Barn here and their out spaces. And then there's a couple of single-family large, kind of large lots here along 43rd as well. So we did send out 68 notices. So far, we've not received any in support or opposition. I think most people in this neighborhood know that this is the Coliseum and Fairgrounds area. They've utilized that for decades and decades. I think most of our citizens realize this is where a lot of heritage events happen, a lot of Western-style events happen, and that's very compatible with our community. Here's just a couple of the sites. This is from 43rd, looking to the, to the north, and then again, from Lakeview Heroes Drive, looking to the south. It is pretty open. You can see the larger complexes there in the, in the background and on the left. I had another picture, and I'm not sure if I included on here. It might have been in your report, from 43rd, right next to the first residential property. They are also very rural and agricultural property in mind. They have livestock and things, and so it is very compatible for this area. Our rationale is that the properties have been acting as accessory uses for the original PD for decades. This entire large block is very similar to ranch and estate, as opposed to RS1 neighborhoods, except for those properties drawn on Alamo. The barn complex is already leased to ASU for their rodeo activities and housing of their livestock, and this continues to allow the renovation process for the Coliseum and future items as needed. Staff does recommend, does recommend approval of expansion of the PD 0502 into the 39 acres directly adjacent. Just some minor conditions that during construction of times that there would be higher dirt and dust, that they should figure out some kind of mitigation, which we'll work with them on that, and that could be temporary measures and removal. Doesn't have to be anything permanent, so it could just be some screening along the fence that would catch the dirt. It could be that they use water trucks once in a while to dampen everything down. One thing that was asked, particularly with ASU, is that to remove the solid opaque fences between what would be considered commercial and residential, and that's mainly because of the livestock. Most of y'all know that livestock don't really like solid fences. They need that airflow and air movement. There's not been any issues with that along the history of this, and so we are, we are removing that, so they don't have to have solid opaque fences. And then, as they're doing the construction, any lighting should be shielded away from residential areas during the nighttime activities. So if they're doing construction at night, which we know that that may take place, they'll just shield it away from those RS1 properties. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Erin. Any questions for Erin? Okay. Open up for public comment? Okay. That's easy. So make a request for motion or further discussion by Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Candy, second by Patrick. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five-zero. PD 25-06, 2400 Hill and 2336 Randolph. Request for approval of a zone change from single-family residential to planned development with a base zoning of low-rise multifamily residential located at 2400 Hill Street and 2336 Randolph.
Good morning, Ray Limeberry, Lead Planner. This is the area of 2400 Hill and 2336 South Randolph. They are requesting a PD, and they are 2.457 acres. In, they're currently zoned RS1, single-family. They are requesting a planned development with a base district of multifamily, low-rise multifamily, RM1. They are in Harry Thomas, District 3, Rio Vista neighborhood. So currently, the vision is neighborhood. All around it is RS1, single-family, with just a little bit of RS2. And there is, for some odd reason, one lot up here that is RM1. So we did mail out 46 notices. We received two in opposition and zero in favor. This is their kind of concept plan and an image of the apartments they plan on building. I am gonna go back for a second. So, I'm gonna use this one. The apartments. They are looking at having the apartments be along Randolph, right here. And then, they would like to refurbish this current building. And currently, their use is for offices and storage to go towards the apartments. They are working with a nonprofit organization, Turning Point, that does apartments. And so, they would have office and a little bit of storage in that building. They do have future plans. They would have to come back and amend the PD for those future plans. But that is an image of the apartments they plan on making. And then, you can see, like I said, this is along Randolph, where the apartments will go. They want a playground around here. They're gonna keep the basketball court that they have and, like I said, do offices in here. The food bank and kitchen, Food Kitchen, is something they would have to come back and amend the PD to add. We are not adding that currently. But again, this is future. This is what they would like in the future. So... These are current pictures. It was difficult to get sometimes. This, the bottom one, is facing that's Randolph along the front. And then, the top picture is Hill along the front. So with that, it will help revitalize the site. It reinvests an existing property, and it also combines residential with just some office and storage space. Multifamily residential and possibly community services with the nonprofit. It will support neighborhood stability. So with that, staff is recommending approval with six conditions for the PD. And it is low-rise multifamily base zoning, that they do obtain all necessary building permits for the renovation and a change of occupancy for the current existing building. And we are requiring that no services be performed on-site at the moment. And then, any lighting needs to be shielded and away from any residential surrounding property. And that the applicant provides appropriate parking for both the apartments and the office/storage. We would like an urban design review. And then, we are requesting an opaque fence along the north, south, and east side of the property. With that, is there any questions?
Any questions? All right. Thank you so much, Ray. Do we have any public comment on this?
Nobody signed up.
Okay, so the applicant is not here.
Oh, she is.
Oh, okay.
She is.
Is there anything that you'd like to share? If you can state your name in either a single-member district or your address?
My name is Adrian McCravy, and the address of the site?
Yes, ma'am, that's me.
Is 2400 South Hill Street on one side and 2336 Randolph on the other side.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I bought this in conjunction and partnership. I'm a board member and a volunteer at Concho Valley, Turning Point. And this property became available, and we have become a partner with United Way in the past year. And so, when the... We're looking at expansion. We currently have men's transitional housing on 528 East Highland, close to Fort Concho. And then, we have... Last year, we opened a women's transitional housing on 4215 Armstrong. Okay? And these, the facilities are for people coming out of incarceration, out of substance abuse rehab, a few out of homelessness. And through our work, Concho Valley, Turning Point has been working with this population for around 30 years. And through our work with that and with United Way, it's come to our attention that the 76903 area code is the highest need area code in the entire Concho Valley. And so, when the opportunity to purchase this property came up, it was just like, okay, we need to bring services to this community and make things more accessible for people that may have difficulty in accessing services in the rest of San Angelo. I was... This is kind of an aside, but I was a counselor at CRTC, Roy Kira, for four years. And one of the gentlemen that I counseled there, he had lived in San Angelo his whole life, and he was like, early 30s. His whole life, he'd lived in San Angelo. In his whole life, he'd lived in a four-block area in this zip code. He didn't have any idea that the rest of San Angelo really even existed. He had no access, no interaction. And so, that's something that we want to not have going forward, that the community is actually part of the whole San Angelo community. And so, the transitional housing that we hope to build along this one point is, there's a very extreme need for transitional housing for families, especially small families. Large families can be assisted by HUD. Small families, they have a very hard time placing them. And so, this would be in order for the families to sometimes reunify and sometimes just get through a hard time in order to get back on their feet and become part of the community again. So that's our mission. That's our goal.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. We appreciate you sharing that. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. We will close public comment at that point and open up for discussion or a motion.
I'll motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Patrick, second by Lyndon. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five zero. Our final case for today is Z 25-22, 1218 South Van Buren. A request for approval of a zone change from single-family residence to two-family residence for property located at 1218 South Van Buren.
Thank you, Austin Reed, Senior Planner. This one comes out of the Santa Rita neighborhood. It's District Number Five, Karen Hesse-Smith District. The vision plan here is neighborhood. It measures about .238 acres. And this is a zone change from RS1 to RS2. It's just a singular residential lot with an existing structure. Mailed out 25 notices, did not receive any responses. Here's a look at our zoning map and our vision plan. On the left-hand side, we have our zoning map. You can see this is mostly RS1. We do have some other pockets of that darker yellow there, which is RS2. Our vision plan on the right-hand side, as you can see, it's entirely neighborhood. Under our rationale, we do think it's compatible with the surrounding area. It's surrounded by other residential districts and similar pockets of RS2, as I just indicated. We have observed and demonstrated community need for two-family housing, especially in this area. And we don't think that there would be any adverse effects on the natural environment. So with that, we are recommending approval of the zone change. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions for Austin? Okay.
Yes, and I think it might have already been operated in that way to some capacity when they found out that it wasn't allowed under the RS1 zoning. They reached out for a zone change, and we seem to think that it was a reasonable request.
Yeah, it appears that it was split in years past into two residences. And I think they came forward with a permit and realized, oh, well, the zoning's not correct, and this is to correct the zoning.
Any other questions for Austin? All right. Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this one, Ray?
Aaron Nelson. Good morning, everybody. I'm Aaron Nelson. So this property actually was bought like three years ago, and it's been operated as a duplex for probably the last 30 years. We just got done with a remodel on it. We totally redid it. The reason we're here is because we were trying to put HVAC in one side, so. But, long story short, perfectly set up for it. Has two front doors, two back doors, two different parking areas, two backyards. It's literally always been operated this way. So I know I'm the last thing standing between you and your morning, so I'll keep it brief. But I do just ask that you approve the zone change.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron? Any other public... Okay. We will go ahead and close public comment and open for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay. Motion by Lyndon, second by Candy. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five zero. So we will go to Aaron for the Planning Director's report.
Thank you, Brittany. This month is the National Planners Month. Tomorrow at City Council, we'll be getting a proclamation about that. But what it really means is the hard work that you guys do, as well as our Zoning Board of Adjustment and our DHRC Board, tiers board, and other boards that really work to make planning a difference in our community. Along with that, coming up in November, we're gonna be at City Council to get the comprehensive plan request for qualifications process started, so that we're gonna start getting some companies to submit their qualifications for our comprehensive plan. And so, we hope that after the first year, that will be kicked off with a contract, and we will start really working on our comprehensive plan. And you saw many of our cases today, whether they're a rezoning or replat, and it's all about redevelopment for our community within our community, is how do we continue to allow that to stay flexible? And how do we project that to happen in the next 20, 30, 40 years in our community? So it will take a lot of community feedback. It'll take a lot of work from commissioners like you guys that are sitting on boards to really think about the future and how decisions we make today impact us 30 years down the road. And so, very excited about that. Our staff team is really coming together very well. We're very excited about the staff that we have and how we're able to utilize the skills that we have together. So I'm very excited about that. I look forward to, if it decides to turn fall, which it was a little bit this morning, but through the holiday season, we'll still have quite a few cases coming forward. We have a lot of redevelopment happening. And so, I'm happy to say that it sounds like San Angelo's staying strong. We hope next month, we'll have a report on the housing study that COSA DC did. I'll probably see if they can send that to me, and I can give us a synopsis of what that housing study really says, so... Because really, we're gonna be the group that says, all right, how do we change our housing future and change with our zoning ordinance to make that happen? So I'm very excited about what we have coming forward in the next 18 to 24 months. So y'all stick with us, and that's all I have for today.
Okay. Perfect. Do we have any follow-up and administrative issues to address? No? Okay. With that being said, the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission is scheduled to begin Monday, November 17th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. in the East Mezzanine City Hall, located at 72 West College Avenue. May I have a motion for adjournment? A motion by Lyndon, second by Patrick. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you for your time today and putting up with me.